So, Sammy, we came, we went into non-public at six and we came out at six thirty.
Okay.
And it's six thirty-six, so we are gonna get going on the regular part of our, our agenda for the evening. First of all, our business is the approval of minutes of November twenty-sixth. Folks have a chance to read them?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Any edits?
No.
The brackets?
That's all.
By consensus, we will, an explanation, I guess, we will approve them. All right. Do you have any input?
Hi, sorry, I'm Hannah Watson Lane. I just wanted to let you know, I, I realize that the board may in the future, but I don't know how soon, be considering doing a warrant article for the proposed public administration police station building. And I just wanted to make some comments on that. I've been to the presentation that was done by some of the companies that wanted to build it, and, you know, it's, one of the presentations was very impressive, and it was just wonderful. However, at one of the hearings, I don't remember if that one or the subsequent one, there were a lot of questions raised by residents, and most of the residents' questions weren't so much about the new building per se, but about what are we gonna do about the old building, what are we gonna do about this one, how are we gonna afford it, you know, lots and lots of questions like that. And when they were raised, apparently Charlie Putnam explained that the space needs committee couldn't answer questions about this building and others because they weren't charged with it. And, and that was entirely correct. If they're not charged with it, they can't answer the questions that were raised by these people. So I guess my point is that it's, that night, whatever that hearing was, I thought there was a general feeling of the people that were attending that they wanted to have some of those questions answered before we were charging forward with this project. And it's certainly a lovely project, it's just, I think a lot of people felt that certain things had to be answered. And I think that, I would hope that the board would consider going in and delving into those questions and matters that have been raised by the public. It seems to me there's a number of them. You know, for instance, is there, is there a way to bring this building up to snuff, you know, bring it into the twenty-first century a little bit? Is there a way to do that? What would be the cost? If we just, if we kept town hall stuff here and just had a police station, or moved the police station and both there, you know, what are, is it gonna improve police response? Is it going to, you know, how, how much do the police use this building now? Is there another configuration that would work for them? I don't know. I, I don't think we've ever had a chance to really look into that. And I think it's unfair to the police not to look into some of those questions and answer them fully before we go forward, because it's a big fight if we start getting bond counsel involved and start borrowing money and things like that. And it seems to me, once we get on that train, we won't be able to stop. It'll keep going. And I think we just have to be careful before we make that step. So that's all I'm asking that the town do, is look into those other things and try to figure out, you know, whether we need like an engineering study to see what would make this building more habitable for what we use it for. I mean, I don't know what the answers are particularly, it's just that I don't wanna jump into it before we've had the answers, and then all of a sudden, we have this building, we haven't figured out what to do with it, we don't know whether we should raise it, whether we should try to sell it, whether we have to fix it before we sell, you know, who knows? What is the impact gonna be if we move stuff from downtown out into a residential area? I don't know that we've done any studies to figure out how that would impact both downtown and how it would impact Silver Street itself. I, I know, I know someone who lives on Silver Street, maybe it'll affect you, I don't know. But I think we should look at that, you know, is the parking different there? You know, I know they talked about how many spaces they have, but I mean, here we have overflow, we do have across the street we can use for the evening, and we can get away with that. On Silver Street, you wouldn't wanna have people parked all the way up and down Silver Street, I think it would be a very bad traffic hazard. So those are the types of questions. And also, you know, for the police themselves, you know, what are we going to be looking at for the future of our police department itself? You know, are we, you know, is crime going up, down? Do we have the right number of officers to meet, to meet these questions? Will we be still using the same type of force in the future? Are we gonna be growing, or as a community, having a higher popular, you know, we've never looked at any of that. And I think we've, I'm just saying, I think we gotta look at these things carefully. Because if, if we take our time and do it right, you know, we should, we should do it, but I think we should, we need to take our time and do it, or if we're gonna do it at all. Those were my things, and I urge you to consider those items before we start sticking it on a warrant article, because I think our, our townspeople really appreciate it if they can get some real data to answer their questions. But once they have it, they can make a more informed choice. So, thank you. That was, that was it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public, you got community input? Saying none, Tom, come on up. Billy Inspector Cotaforce.
Yes, sir.
Come on up. First thing we have on the agenda is the junkyard license.
Right. And I sent an update this morning, you know, my email is yesterday.
Yep.
And I was saying that, I was kinda surprised to find that out myself, because in all the years I've been doing this, ownership was irrelevant, it was the use.
Right.
But in this particular case, NRSA, I thought, is fairly clear, and they even gave a further explanation. So I sent a, an inquiry into the legal, the Andrew Municipal Association. I haven't gotten the response yet.
All right. So everyone's clear until, until a minute, if, if everyone hasn't had a chance to read it. Tom found a statute that pertains to junkyards. Normally, and only junkyards, normally if, I don't know, we've got a, a non-conforming use garage, and John owns the garage, John sells it, and it's in a place where it can't, it shouldn't be, like a non-conforming use. And Mary buys the garage, lungs is not a substantial amount of time between when it was an active garage and when Mary takes it over, there's no problem. She can still have a garage, but it's a grandfathered use. Apparently, the junkyard's not so much the case.
Right.
So we need to find out whether or not, and when this transfer of ownership happened, whether or not there was ever a public hearing by the planning board or zoning board, what course of action the select board took back then, because it may not have been, it may have been done right, it may not have been, and if it wasn't done right, then it shouldn't have been operating all these years.
Right. I think that's gonna be the key. I'm, I'm gonna ask Sarah to look, because I'm not sure if, was she?
Oh, yeah. So, the records, so, okay. Caroline did a little bit today, and there was, let me see what she said, what years. There's quite a span of years that it could possibly have happened in.
Yeah. I seem to recall Mr. Cassinelli saying, you know, during, or two weeks ago, that he's been there thirteen years, which, which puts it...
Seventeen.
Did he call?
I thought he said since two thousand and one, but that's, my memory is not...
All right, so, I'm guessing, I was guessing oh-five, so it's still the same.
Same. Caroline writes, there's a building permit in the file in nineteen eighty under Edward Day. The earliest assessment card we have is dated two thousand and five, at which time it was owned by the current owner. So the change happened between nineteen eighty and two thousand and five, but certainly since zoning was adopted in nineteen seventy-one.
So we're both right.
Yes. You are, you are, but it's still quite a span of years that we need to go back and look at the minutes, if they're ever accessible.
Well, or we could put the burden of proof on the owner.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if he has it, or if he did it, then certainly he would have a record of it, and I...
He should, yeah.
Personally, we doubt that that happened, but I...
You weren't, you weren't helping the town then, were you?
I was.
You were.
Yeah, I started in ninety-four or five.
Oh, okay.
But it was, at the time, it was, it was just strictly plan review and inspections. It wasn't, you know, there was no office hours, it was just kind of an on-demand thing.
Right, right.
So, and I...
Well, it may or may not have been something that would have called you, I guess.
Right. And I, I know that I, I'm pretty sure I know, that I've never, I never looked into anything like that, never, you know, discussed, and it seems to me it would just be like everyone would assume, that Mr. Day stopped, Mr. Cassinelli started, and it was just...
Right, same ones, right.
Yeah.
So maybe we should go back and find out who the planning board chair was too, then, and see if it went there, right, right now with the zoning board chair was.
Yeah. So if you'd like, in the meantime, I'll, I'll communicate with Mo and ask him if he's...
Yeah, sure.
If he's got something, and, so what is it?
Okay. But that aside, there are some other issues though, right? So he's got two issues now, or an additional issue. He may or may not have been, well, I don't think it's his fault, but he probably shouldn't have been operating if he hadn't gone through those other processes.
Correct.
All these years. So, but besides that, we have the issue of the, the use that we know was never approved, Tom.
Right. And I'm, yeah, I'm pretty confident of that. I mean, even if Mr. Day did it as accessory to the junkyard, that's one thing, but certainly not a whole separate cast towing, twenty-four hour, definitely not that. So that is positively something that we can take action on.
All right. So, the board had discussed in the past, sending a letter to Mr., or having you send a letter to Mr. Cassinelli, asking him to suspend his twenty-four hour towing operations until it's been reviewed by the planning board. He needs to go through that process. Is there any objection to that?
No.
Are we asking him to take the tow trucks off property? Because how else are you gonna control it?
That's a good question. What do you think, Tom?
Well, there's always a provision that, I mean, if we need to, we can get, well, we can either ask the police for help, or just go to court for cease and desist. I mean, if he doesn't wanna do it voluntarily, there are definitely ways that we can do it legally.
Right. I'm just saying, I mean, at, at two in the morning, they're gonna think, who's gonna, who's gonna know we're doing it?
The neighbors, right?
Other than neighbors, but...
They have nothing shy after this point, letting us know what's going on, so...
So I didn't know if, if we should have it, with them off the property, or if we just take their word for it.
Well, I'm guessing that if that were to happen, he would probably move the basic operations somewhere else, because it's fairly lucrative business, and he does go a lot, and he's called by some of the neighborhood, area police departments. So I can't imagine he'd just say, all right, I won't do anything. And if he stores his trucks somewhere else...
It's not going to have our problems.
Right, right.
Okay. And so, we were also thinking that the junkyard license renewal process should be on hold, pending the review by the planning board of that non-conforming use of the towing operation. But now with the new information you've given us...
I think positively, I mean, I don't...
A new wrinkle anyway, so...
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know how we handle that, but...
I think, you know, I can put it in the same, the same message, that we're looking at, we're looking into this.
Yeah.
You, as new owner, have information, then please provide it. In the meantime, the, we can suspend the license. I checked with municipal association, I'm pretty sure we suspend the license, he'll have to stop, period.
Okay. So that's where the next question is.
Oh, yes.
Does he have to suspend all operations?
I would, I would think so. I mean, we found out this information, yes, it's, you know, several years after, but that doesn't change the fact that it's ongoing on a daily basis, so there's a new violation theoretically every day.
Wow, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
It's a lot to unpack here, I guess.
Yeah.
But at least we, we know for one thing, for sure, for one thing, that the towing operation needs to be suspended for now.
Yes.
And pending all reviews.
I don't, yeah, yeah.
And you'll get something together for us, tell them that, and you'll follow up with them?
Yes, sir.
Yoki. Interesting process for all of us. Anything else we need to know about the junkyard?
Um, nothing I know of. I'm just waiting for a response and...
Good times. All right. We have a camper on Prospect Street and a new camper on Rollins Road. At five seventy-one, I think I saw.
Right over the, right over the railroad tracks.
Joe, you were heading back to Dover, going down Rollins Road?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, the first house on the left. It's a little manufactured home.
No kidding.
On the left, right after the railroad tracks.
All the windows plastic is gonna enter the road, so wires running along to the two-car garage.
So they've got, they have a garage, that's a mobile home, and then there's the space, and then there's the home, right? In between the garage and the home is an Alcambro. So it's sort of masked a little bit, but you can see the tail end of it sticking out, the lights on, and then the antenna, just like...
And then, like I said, the wires are going to the garage, take on the doors.
Yeah. What was that address again?
Five seventy-one, Rollins.
It's the first one, it follow, it follows the railroad track, it's the first one that I want.
Oh, I'm sure I can find it. So, okay, so there's that one. Prospect Street, they did send a second, more threatening letter, which I don't know whether they picked it up or...
We sent it certified mail, or...
Yes, yeah. We, we sent it certified and first class, just in case.
Yeah.
I didn't think to ask Caroline about, you know, if it's, if it's been received. But I think, I'm, I'm pretty sure, I mentioned, I put in the letter that they have fifteen days to just stop, and I think that went out Monday.
Last Monday?
Well, we could go, yes.
Okay.
So they still would be within that timeframe.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll check with Caroline tomorrow soon.
All right. I don't have anything else. That's probably enough. Oh, Rollins, other under Rollins Road, one twelve. Have we had any other, that's the junkyard in the front, and the backyard, inside yard.
I sent an inquiry to, to Robert, C. Roberts' office, and Kevin responded, saying that he hadn't heard from that guy. And I sent him pictures, you know, from a while ago, and then, and then recently, and said it's...
Still not.
It's still, yeah, yeah. And I'm sure the guy is just waiting.
Yeah. He's allowed one non-registered vehicle in his car?
Oh, there are, there are at least four.
So...
Yeah.
So that leads me to another one, actually, Tom, and now I've already forgotten the number. Foundry Street, there's a house...
Right across in the garden.
Yeah.
Mobile home.
Yeah.
And there's four cars.
Unregistered.
I believe. There's grass all over, burning.
And there's some storage, like boxcars that you'd use for like storage things?
Oh, right, yeah.
At the bottom, they fill it with what you have to leave. I think it's the last house.
Writing this down.
I'm sure you've been trying, right?
We're heading towards the illusion. It's on the right hand side. And it's the, it's setback of it. I, I don't know who was there, and I apologize if I have the memory.
I'll check it out.
Jog my memory, so.
Yeah.
See what's going on with that. We're gonna have to go after other people for having junk trucks on the property, same thing, so.
Now, is it just motor vehicles, or is it just like junk?
It, it can be anything.
Because there's another one on Rollins Road, right before you get to Oak, on...
The guy on the right?
Yes.
If you recall...
Yeah.
Yeah, he came in...
She wasn't on the board, but I'm the only...
Right.
I have pleasure of it.
That's right.
And I think actually, the night that he came and proved that he was in the right, I was upset, so.
He's in the right?
A different issue, not a garbage issue.
Yeah. Yeah, he was, he was moving his stuff in, and gonna clean it up and make it better, and...
He still hasn't.
And, oh.
He's in the process of selling the property there, too, so. I can't imagine that the real estate agent hasn't told him to clean his property yet.
Right.
He'd have a better chance of selling it.
Okay.
But we should follow with that, too, though, too. He's got a lot of, it's like a dump truck or something in the backyard.
Oh, yeah, that's one of those fishing shacks or something.
Oh, he might have, might have a bobhouse, too, actually.
It seems to be growing, not...
There's a front, backhoe, maybe, a little mini carousel or something. I mean, that's one thing, but it's green, too.
Yeah, yeah. Not making much attempt to...
Or, it looks...
If he's in construction, he's storing it, you know, there's other places where you don't say anything, so. But, it's, it's probably look like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, besides that, Tom, we have nothing else we to work on, I think.
Let him get busy.
Okay.
Anything else for us?
I'm, nope.
Yeah?
While he stays longer, he's gonna get one instead.
You think of something else? And I'll definitely keep you a prime supporter.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Glad to see you.
Thank you.
George. How's it going? I was, I was driving you in alphabetical order, I didn't see the parts you've cut out, so. You're here now, George, it's all right. Trying to have some time to work, I thought we were going alphabetical order, but I haven't achieved it yet, so.
Okay, what do we...
Whatever you have for us. You can do your stuff first, I'm gonna do what we have.
What's that?
The bailer. You wanted me to get a PO for the bailer.
I wanted you to get a PO for the bailer.
No, that Friday, I was asked to get a PO for the price of the PO.
Oh, 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 yeah, 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 yeah. Well, we were confused about what the actual price was, and so we wanted you to get that.
Right, I got that correct.
It's, it's, it's part of this budget, but we were confused because, when we were going over the budget on Friday, and Caroline, George came in, and we were confused about the end price of what it was.
Okay, I was on Friday.
This is the one that we said we were gonna buy, but we didn't...
The refurbished one that we were gonna rent for a few months, and then...
Right. But then we haven't rented it yet, because it hasn't been, it wasn't available, and...
Available now?
It's in, it's at the dump, it's on the dump, and wait for Mr. Electric, so it's not their fault.
No, no. So what was the total price?
The total price in the bailer is seventeen seven.
Seventeen seven, okay.
Okay. So what I'm wondering is that, you just wanted to know how much it was?
Well, he doesn't have a PO to buy it. It's not in our file. Do we need to have PO?
If we're purchasing it all at once, but we don't have, we have money in the budget to purchase one all at once, so. I thought we were doing installment over a few months, and then it was going in the budget for next year.
However, I thought we determined that we had some money in the budget, and Caroline is not here, so we can't confirm that.
That's the first thing, but I'm, I'm here.
I know, we were working on the budget.
No, that I knew you were doing.
So that's why we were gonna have discussion, but I'm not comfortable with Caroline not being here, because she might not be coming out.
It's not getting said, hooked up tomorrow anyway, so, so, thank you for doing it. Can we do it next Monday? Talk about it?
Yeah.
Caroline.
Just put it back in.
I'll make sure she's here, or she's here to speak for us, and I know what's going on with that. That, we had a conversation today, but that didn't come up, so.
Okay.
The rest of the agenda didn't, but that didn't come up, so.
I have some trees that need to come down, however, they can't do it till after the first of the year.
Okay.
I got thirty-seven hundred dollars in the account, and I don't want, you want to do a PO on it?
Yes, if you want it done.
He said he'll be able to get it.
You wanna be able to pay for it with this year's money, yeah, let's do it now.
Yeah. PO for urban tree for thirty-seven, like, gonna be thirty-seven fifty, but he can't get the crane to do one, so we're gonna just do it at thirty-seven, we have it. And we used thirteen hundred earlier, and the day went over, so we only had thirty-seven million left. We get, that, remove some trees on General Sullivan, Bear Road, and dead trees, and Sligo Road, so. PO is for thirty-seven hundred for urban tree, and all right.
I will move, purchase order one four nine five, since this is thirty-seven hundred...
Thirty-seven hundred, yes.
Thirty-seven hundred dollars to urban tree service, removal of dead trees on General Sullivan, Bear Road, Sligo Road.
I can?
Okay. So, we've confirmed that there's thirty-seven hundred left in the...
That's correct.
In the line? All right, it's coming out of the... Any other discussion, questions? Okay. As long as we have more trees than I, than you can come down, so. All those in favor of purchase over fourteen ninety-five, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It's good that you're doing this, George, 'cause I was gonna make that announcement. I was gonna tell you that, oh, I'll keep that, I'm sorry. Bob didn't wanna keep it down there. All right, who got, do you?
That's just the rest of the order.
All right, right over. That was it?
No, you were, you were saying something.
Well, we have a list of things to go over, but with you.
No, I got, I got, I'd like to be able to purchase this, we're not gonna be buying the sidewalk machine this year. We put that off in the, in the budget, so. I'd like to get a snowplow for that skid steer, to be able to plow when the snow's too heavy, we can't blow it.
Okay.
The bucket is just not adequate, you gotta keep dumping it off to the side. Snowplow, we can continue on our way and get, and probably open up a little bit more, a few more sidewalks. It's twenty-four, twenty-five hundred and forty-two dollars, I have that money in the equipment fund.
How much?
Twenty-five forty-two. I didn't wanna purchase, you know, do anything with that machine if we were gonna do something else, but, I mean, this would make, the snow removal a little easier, than trying to do with the bucket.
Sub vehicle repair and maintenance?
Equipment.
Equipment, sorry. All right. How much do you have off in your equipment line right now, George?
I'm showing over forty-five, forty-five hundred to five thousand, which is an accurate estimate.
So when you were doing budget work on Friday, did you take anything from that line? Did you move anything from there?
I don't know. Caroline doesn't move anything, she's just...
All right, so...
Using the bucket, it's just, you know, you can only go so far, you're gonna turn and dump it on either someone's car or vehicle.
Can we defer it?
Yeah, I, I want to hold off on that one till next week, too, George. I wanna confirm that we can, we haven't moved money around that we needed to, other priority areas.
That might have been part of the calculation, being able to do the bailer, so we may not be able to do the bailer if we do this.
Right, so I need to, yeah, I wanna make sure that we're not, we're not over sending this, in one way or another, so. We're gonna meet on the tenth and on the seventeenth, so, of this month, so. Not meeting on Christmas Eve, sorry to everyone, but...
So on the snowplow, if you get this piece of equipment, will you still be going out to the other piece of equipment next year?
Yes.
Why?
This is just, this is just a plow for the skid steer.
Yeah, but why do you need the other one?
The other machine is too, this machine is still too big. It's just, this is so we could, you know, plow the sidewalks, we're just trying to bucket the snow out of the way when it's wet, heavy snow, the snowblower don't handle.
It's a temporary solution, I think, that George is saying.
Right, and the, the plow would still be available.
They know they wanna redo it afterwards.
They still can do it.
I'm not saying I'm in favor, I'm just saying it's temporary, that's all. I'm just, I don't know what we do with that. That's why I wanna think about it for a week, and we wanna talk about it, make sure we actually have the money in place, if we can ask some more of those questions, then.
That's for a brand new one?
Yeah, it's a brand new plow.
Is there...
I tried, I tried and first ones, and they didn't have any used around, and...
Around the time of year to be looking for snow.
Yeah, I mean, everybody's doing the same thing.
So, let's just say we buy it, George, and then next year, is it on the CIP next year for the other articulator motor, mower, or not mower, I don't remember, but...
Articulator loader.
Is on for twenty-twenty. So, let's just say we buy this piece tonight for twenty-five hundred dollars. What do we do with it next year?
You can still use it to clear the transfer station, it's, it's not gonna go away.
Right.
You know, we still own it, and it can still be used for snow removal when we need it. I mean, it's, this is just making, we, clearing the sidewalks easier than, I mean, trying to run a snowblower with an inch of snow, or two inches of snow, you can just scrape this off with a plow.
Right.
And then when the heavy wet snow, you end, clogging the snowblower, I try clearing the sidewalks with the, with the bucket, it's just a real pain to do.
Sure probably is. Okay, all right, well, we need to think about it, because we need to figure out if we haven't...
That's fine.
We have to figure out where we moved just recently, or we're suggesting we're gonna move money around to pay for the bailer, so. Let's just hold off on it till next week, or we're suggesting we're gonna move money around to pay for the baler, so, let's just hold off on it till next week if we could, please. Any other, uh, any other P Os in that, no?
No, I'm talking, not yet.
Not yet, all right, fair enough. We appreciate what you're trying to do, it's just, we need to figure out if we can, where we're at in the budget, that's all. That time of year where we need to be, uh, we need to be very cautious, so. We have three things on the agenda to talk to you about, culvert, Sligo culvert, what the next steps are going to be. Are you, what are you thinking for?
I still think we need to remove the top pipe on the first culvert.
Yeah.
And open up the bottom of it, that stuff we can probably do ourselves.
Okay.
So we're not gonna, you know, nothing there, we'll pavement in the top after we repair it.
Okay.
So that's all gonna be in our house under road work.
Okay, so we don't need additional money going into the culvert fund for that?
No, I mean, you may need some culvert, to buy some culvert, but culvert's not, you know, they're a couple hundred bucks a piece, so. Something's gotta be replaced on Sligo Road besides that. We had one washed under mines in this last rain we had, and we filled it in, I mean, it's just, started washing the end of it out, but. It's down by the fountain there also, and if you're talking about the big culvert.
Yeah.
Then I'm thinking, talking with the engineers, it'd be about, you know, right around fifty thousand dollars, we can re, uh, we can put rip rap and stuff to shore up the bank and, and then we can open the road back up to them.
Move the Jersey barriers back or take them away?
Right.
So we're thinking it's fifty thousand to do that work?
Yeah, he said, he said twenty-five to fifty thousand, he gave it, you know, ballpark bigger, depending on what you wanna do, we can, you know, it's getting, somebody, it's not something we can do without, it's gonna be equipment higher for that, because to dig, you know, to dig deeper, dig.
Okay, so, we'll check and see what we have in there currently, and then, we took some out last year to do the, um, culvert repair work down, the outfall down.
And again, this is not something that has to happen next year.
Okay, well, we can start, we want our savings.
Right, and, but, we can open the road back up anytime. We can take the, move the barriers back a little bit on one side, but making it, reinforcing the, the bank, as he said, would be not a bad idea before, you know, before you change anything. The other side, the barriers were put in, when they did the road, he said, we could either take them out or move, there was nothing there before. So, we're gonna, we can widen that road back down there and get that road back to regular width.
On the river side of the road?
Yeah.
That they're not?
Yeah, they said they're not bad, you know, I think we probably, we could put a guardrail in there, inexpensive, and then take the Jersey barriers right out of there, we'll have the road back to, you know, almost regular width. But he said the culvert itself's in good shape, and I said, then somebody should have been telling you the whole story when they, they looked at this, and not just, you know, half of it.
So would that come from the culvert fund?
I'm trying to think, we, we need to find out exactly what we have in the culvert fund, is that the amount?
I, I did get a quote to put guardrails on both sides and take the barriers right out, that's six thousand dollars, so.
Would that be included in the fifty thousand or no? Is that on top?
It could, you know, I mean, it could be put in that, it's, he doesn't, he's not sure, he said twenty-five to fifty thousand dollars, you could get this shored up pretty good. Again, looking at what, you know, that, not knowing what you're gonna get for quotes or bids. But it's not something I think we should just jump in without having to look at, you know.
Right, I agree. Okay, so we know that we need to.
We know that it's, the culvert itself is in good shape, we can extend it a little bit on the, uh, not the riverside, the opposite side of the road, by shoring up that bank and so. And it should be cleaned up, there's a lot of dead brushing stuff in that area too, and reroute the water coming down the hill further upstream, and then you wanna eliminate the chance of having that washout.
Any other questions for George about this? And we're posting roads, I need, I wanna get through the budget before we.
Yep.
I need to get through this, unless someone else wants to take it on, but I'd like to just hold off on it if we could, unless people have very desire to work on it now. Uniforms, so, do we have something in the, one of the folders we need to sign about uniforms? We have, um.
No.
No, nothing, we have nothing to sign.
It's just an F Y I.
Okay, so, the F Y I was that, um, we have an opportunity to get insurance on the.
We should put the insurance on the uniforms, it may charge you fifty, sixty dollars a shirt.
Right.
And they charge us eight cents an hour item for insurance. So anybody that turns a uniform and that has a little bit of paint and stuff on, they're gonna charge you, you know, like I just changed uniform sizes.
Right.
And there's some that have paint and stuff on, they're gonna charge you, by the time we pay for the shirts, it's, insurance would have covered all this, so.
So curiosity though, they clean them for us.
Yep.
Okay, so, because they didn't do their job and clean the paint off the shirts, that's our fault?
That's a stain, the paint you can't get off.
They have a lot of chemicals though, I mean, there's stuff that they could do, right?
Right, I, I don't wanna be wearing the things that they use, and that kind of chemicals on it, but.
Um, George, have an adventure.
All right, so, um.
Well, I still think that they should be somewhat accountable.
That should have been brought when they sold the uniform package, that should be brought up when the package is sold. They don't like to sell it in the beginning, and the guy told them, salesman told me himself, the group salesman told me, he said, they wanna see, they want you to see what your value is of it for us before, you know, instead of selling you the insurance in the beginning, so. Once you start tearing a pair of pants and stuff like that, they seem that they're charging us fifty dollars, you can go to Walmart and buy these same uniforms for twenty bucks. You know, and, so, they got you, and you're in a contract for, what, five years?
No, I don't think so.
Most of these, most of these companies, you have three to five years with these companies, once you sign on.
Conditioned approval of the budget anyway, so. It's easy to have to add up, so.
You know, I mean, I know they've been charging us for items that have been damaged and.
All right, so I think what we, we need to, we need to authorize Caroline to sign us up for the insurance, um.
I think it is in nineteen's budget.
It is in nineteen.
They wanted, she wants to do it like this month, right, right.
The driver did not turn my uniforms in until you guys make a decision, so we won't get charged with that.
So he has them, the driver still has them, so I'd like to.
I'll make a motion that we add insurance to the uniform account starting immediately.
Uh, I second it.
Any other discussion about it?
So what is the outright cost right now for the insurance?
Eight cents per.
It's eight cents per garment, and I have eleven sets, Ed's got eleven sets, so you have, it's, he says it's around three hundred to four hundred dollars, around four hundred dollars a year.
A year, yeah, you're only gonna pay the additional month.
Okay, perfect.
Cause it's in next year's budget already.
And if you have to replace your shirt, how much is it, fifty dollars?
Fifty, sixty dollars, yeah.
Fifty, sixty dollars for an item, and I said, no, I'm.
So it's gonna cost us more to replace your shirt than pay for one month's insurance, so, all right, so.
Pretty much.
Yep.
Any other discussion about it? All those in favor of getting the insurance on the uniforms, say aye.
Aye.
I've been trying to get them to do this right off, and I said, why don't we have this?
The thing is, I don't know, understand, they know that you're in a position where you're gonna get dirty and torn and how they can get away with it.
This color uniforms, this color uniforms, you paid with them and stuff? You know.
Well, they quite sold us that way.
It's a way, it's a way to sell more items.
Yeah.
Wasn't quite described this way.
Right, well, they actually went through it, the water department just took on uniforms, and they didn't even offer them the price, and then when they heard what we were doing, Caroline told them to put the insurance on.
All right, so we got that covered at least, so we, I don't have them turned in yet, well Caroline, um.
Yeah, I just gotta tell the driver this week when he comes, so.
Maybe not, so she starts over tomorrow. All right, anything else for George? Anything for us?
I guess.
Okay.
The little baler that we were gonna sell for five hundred dollars, now, to my knowledge, that baler was no good. Well, it runs.
Okay.
I cannot see getting rid of a piece of equipment that we could use to bail paper. I mean, it's your choice, like, I had a look at it the other day, I had Atlantic Moore look at it, he said, we change the oil a bit. He said, you're beyond the machine, he said, run it till it dies. You know, I mean, we're gonna get five hundred dollars for basically scrap it. I mean, it's a choice, it's up to you guys, we can take it out, but if it works, I don't, I wouldn't, I was told it didn't work at all.
Where is it housed currently?
It's inside the garage, right next to the codwood baler.
What would be the cost?
It's a smaller, it's a smaller baler, you know, it needs, it needs to be serviced, it hasn't had the oil change that it does, but.
What, um, what would be the startup cost to get it back up and running?
I can get a quote on that, it, it, it used to just be the price of the oil and just have them change.
There isn't any other electrical work that would need to be done?
There's a couple of safety switches that he'd have to put on to bring it up to safety standards, but, uh, but he said, we could run it the way it is and see if, how it makes a bail, you know, before we, we could try bailing something with it. If it makes bails, he said, there's no reason to give it that machine. But that's, again, a choice, you know, you guys can make.
The baler we're buying?
No, no, this, this is, this is the original baler they had before they bought the big codwood baler.
Okay.
It's about a half-size baler. We could bail paper where we gotta keep it in the building anyways, keep it dry. We could bail paper with that instead of leaving it out, you know, till we get enough to bail it out, and even smaller bales.
Is there a cost to remove it, to unhook it?
No, they were buying it for us, they're just gonna come and take it out for those five hundred bucks. So, I mean, you know, we can have it taken out, to me, one way or another, it doesn't matter. If it works, Ed was wondering if we could keep it to, you know, to bail paper with, I mean, it's. Try it, see what, what it does, but, again, I don't know why, why it's still there, but was, I was told it was no good.
I don't know, I, I, George, I don't know.
I mean, it's nothing that has to be rushed on, it's not in a way, we can, you know, you still gonna give us five hundred bucks for it if we decide to get rid of it.
Yeah, I think we should see if it works.
I don't disagree.
I mean, it's, it's, it's crazy.
Put that, that, we've been told for years it didn't work, so.
You know, Ed started it, and then, and then I had them, what we looked at, he said, we don't know what it'll make for bail, so it may, maybe it's still an issue. So, but it makes, if it makes a bail.
And you got used to paper, do you have any objection?
I mean, at least try it. But, you know, I, I've been told, you know, different things are no good and stuff like that, and then all of a sudden, stuff works and.
I start finding you Dr. Frankenstein, bringing everything back to life, in a good way, not that way.
You know, except, I mean, that's all I could, no, part of livelihood was, the rumor is that the thing was no good, and we ought to just get rid of it, and.
Is it, is it worth more if it turns out it does work, you know, makes beautiful bills, worth more than five hundred?
Yeah, I would imagine it is.
So we should know what we're, what, what we have before we sell it?
I don't disagree with that statement, though.
You know, I mean, they used to, I guess they used to bail cans with it.
I think they did the tin can, soda cans.
You know, but, I mean, this is stuff I, I was told and it didn't work, so, and then Ed said, well, I'm gonna try it, the heck of it. It ran, and then I had Chris come over from Atlanta, he ran it up and down, running up and down, he said, I don't know what kind of bail it'll make, but if it makes a bail, he said, it really, you know, other than servicing it, putting a couple safety switches on it.
Well, we need to bail paper, right, so.
We're gonna, you know, we're gonna be doing paper, we're gonna be trying to bail everything we have so we can, you know, recoup.
Right.
I mean, and.
I'd rather do that than have to buy another one, so.
But I think we have to be cautious that we don't put a whole lot of money into it.
No, no, and I wouldn't, and I wouldn't recommend putting too much money into it either.
You know, we should have a cutoff.
Cause we do have, we do have a bail.
Right.
So we should have a cutoff of what we would be willing to put into it before we turn around and get the five hundred back for it, you know, I mean, so. But I'm okay with you trying it and working with it as long as you can.
If it works. It, it's foolish to get rid of something, you know.
Yeah.
I just agree on the side of that.
Like a case of the backhoe situation when I first died.
It was on his death's door, and apparently it's working again. All right, I appreciate it, George, may the master George tonight. Now, more good news, the other machinery you brought back?
We had in front of the shop paved.
I saw that, I think, good job, yes.
Town, I mean.
Yes, I meant to say that too tonight, good job, yeah.
So, I mean, just wanna give a heads up on that.
No, that was terrific, thank you for that.
I don't have anything else.
That's all good news you're telling us, I like that, so.
Is that okay? Is that okay? Is that okay?
Ed, yes, he went through, so he'd be fine. He is.
On the mend?
Yeah, he's doing fine.
Okay, good.
You know, if I be, a couple more days, the rest of the week, but.
Okay, he's all right, okay.
Yeah, he'd be fine. Says a little stiff, just had an upper it on.
Right, fair enough. All right, anything else, George? All right, well, thank you very much, George.
Good night.
Good night. Chief. Pump or truck or something that you bring back when you do that?
No, we couldn't manage that, sorry, but. Something's just to add to service life, unfortunate, but. And that's where I'm at tonight, I got a few P Os I need to submit for some equipment that we needed to grab. First one, let's just, we got numbers on these things. We got three of them, I guess. Uh, the first one we might as well start with is protective equipment. I had, I had informed you before that the woman that manages our protective equipment is Bergeron Protective Clothing. She's gonna come in next Monday, 'cause we need to get one complete ensemble, a couple pairs of bunker pants, and maybe a coat or something, so she's gonna come in next Monday and do the actual measuring, so we get everybody custom fit. And that's when, I had said that, you know, I wasn't gonna get any hose this year, 'cause if we go over on that line, that's where we can slide that in. And we probably will, and some of this is just a repercussion of all the new people we have, which is a. And they're, they're in their school, they started that orientation was Thursday, they go back tomorrow, and they're all up and running, they're good, they're goes. They're enthusiastic, so I think we'll have some success with some new people.
Okay.
So the first purchase order I have is for Bergeron, it's number four forty-six, and basically, this is for protective clothing, for gloves and hoods that we needed to augment to take care of our members, it's nine twenty-three, twenty-four. And the protective clothing line right now is four thousand dollars, so this will take it down, you know, roughly three, and then we'll see what comes up with the, the rest of the stuff that we have to get ordered next week. And I'm gonna have her do that, give me the invoices right after that, so it'll go on to this year's, this year's fund.
Our last meeting of the year is gonna be the seventeenth.
Yep. I'll be all set by then, hope to have.
We're gonna talk about having another meeting, probably the New Year's week, we'll have to probably, but it'll be past the fiscal year, so we need to make sure everyone.
Yep, yep, I got it.
So I'll move purchase order one four four six to Bergeron Protective Clothing for nine twenty-three, twenty-four, for protective clothing.
Second.
Purchase order number fourteen forty-six to Bergeron Protective Clothing, if they move them second, are there any comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, all right. For nine twenty-three, twenty-four, so.
I have the invoices and stuff here, so that all that can just come back to me, 'cause this whole pile goes to, goes to Caroline, her and I have our little system that works. Works pretty good for us right now. My next one is number four forty-five, it's fire tech and safety, and basically, with the change in cold weather, we've had two or three C O calls. And one of the meters which we have is done, not serviceable anymore. So, two things we needed to purchase, we needed to purchase calibration gas, which is a methane-based gas, which is, has to be monthly done to the units that we have now to keep them serviceable, so we had to order some of that, and we, we went and ordered a new gas detector. So I have new equipment on both engines. This is coming out of the equipment line, the equipment line, 'cause as I said the other night, while you were at the budget committee thing there, I've only spent sixty-two percent of my budget, so this is kinda cleaning up some of the other stuff. The equipment line itself still has four thousand dollars in it, so we're gonna put a dent in it a little bit this evening. So those two meters, one meter, two bottles of calibration gas, and I think that gas is, you know, it's a small little bottle like this, but they get like three, four hundred dollars. So, like I said, fire tech safety, you want this one? Eleven hundred dollars.
Okay, I need purchase order fourteen forty-five, a fire tech and safety of New England, for four meter gas detectors and two bottles of calibration gas, going to the equipment account with a total of one thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars even.
Oh, sorry, second. Purchase order fourteen forty-five is, didn't second it, fire tech safety of New England.
I have a question.
Go for it.
Is the calibration gas hazardous material?
Hazardous material? Yes.
Do you have a hazardous material cabinet?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, two.
Good.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of purchase order fourteen forty-five, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, all right.
It's a combination of propane, methane, butane mixed.
Sometimes it's meat.
Isn't it lovely? Is what you have to put in the machine to get it to talk to itself, so it'll, 'cause there's four little sensors inside of each machine for each particular gas that we may have to go meter, and grabs whatever molecules it needs to keep it self-functional, and we've gotta do that on a monthly basis, so. We ran a couple, three calls on that already, and one of them, as we hear, just said that was done.
How long will this amount of gas that we're purchasing tonight last year?
About two years a bottle.
Oh, okay.
Cause we're doing it on a monthly basis.
Okay.
So that's usually the length of time. Plus, they have a service life on it anyway, so it's all good for about that amount of time. But we usually get two years for each one that we need.
But how many do you buy?
Two different bottles.
Two different bottles, okay.
Four different meters. As always, you know, you can't have one that's generic for everything.
Of course.
You know how that works. Second thing, equipment line. With all the rain we've been having, instead of snow, we've had three or four calls for water in a basement. We've taken care of some of those issues. But in the course of doing that, one of the pieces of equipment which we use failed. Twenty-two-year-old waterback. This piece of equipment, put on her back, it's got a wand, and you go in, you extract the water, and you remove it, so...
Let me ask you a question.
Go right ahead.
Why do people call you because they have water in their basement? And I say you're doing something wrong, obviously you're not, but why would they call you and not say a plumber?
Or a HVAC? Well, sometimes we get there, I'll clarify for you a little bit. Sometimes we get there, there's no more than an inch on the bottom, and they wanna use our equipment because they don't wanna go buy their own equipment.
Too bad.
Basically, that's what happened. That's the kind of the policy I've adopted on that.
So these are severe cases where the oil tank can tip over or something.
It may threaten a hot water heater, heating equipment, you know, oil burners, things like that. So they'll give us a call so we can try to keep up with that for them a little bit. But some of it is just that, I think, you know, people don't know what to do or they don't wanna do it. Nine-one-one and call us.
Would never imagine calling the fire department for that, call a plumber, but...
Yeah, I'm surprised too. So, are, is there any liability for us if we can't control, us of the town can't control the water?
Well, a lot of it's just because these houses are, you know, a hundred, a hundred fifty years old. They got stone basements and it just weeps dinner, it's coming up through a dirt basement. So we'll try to do what we can and advise them on what they need to do because a lot of times they don't even know what it's doing. So we try to do that for them and liability for us? No.
So this isn't necessarily, they've got frozen pipes that crack and their basement's flooding. This is, water's coming out through the water tank.
Pretty much around water, that kind of...
Dirt basement.
But again, that's the other thing.
Makes more sense to me.
Well, now that we are getting...
That is nervous.
It would make a call fire.
It goes both ways. I mean, usually we don't get it this time of year, usually we get on that spring.
It rains down, right.
Ground is partially frozen and all it's been doing is raining and raining and raining. So it's finding its way in. But the other thing on this kind of equipment is, once we get to cold weather, we always go to two or three freeze-ups of sprinkler systems. And we've gone mutually to other communities where they've had these things break and it just overwhelms them. And so they call in other departments, and this is just some of that equipment.
Again, I just got confused.
No, I mean...
It could be there, then we could have called the frozen pipe of somebody's house.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've heard before.
Well, we had one, I don't know, a month or so ago for somebody in their basement over here on Pine Street where the line to the toilet let go. And he couldn't find the shut-off. Because the place was basically in a hoarding situation, he couldn't find out the incoming water to the house to shut it off. So he's there like playing with, you know, the guy who holds his thumb in the dike, but he's got two inches of water in his whole basement. So he came in and says, "Try to find him, I don't know where it is." Move all that stuff, clothes, dirt, pile, this, that. It's right there, shut that off when we're done, but, you know, we stayed and helped him a little bit. A lot of the water stuff, a lot of it's public relations, and it's more of a positive on that fact that if you can show up and help these people out because they don't have any guidance.
Sure.
And it looks on the community and the firefighters.
I'm not opposed to you doing it, I just never would've thought to call you all for that.
Believe me, there is that fine line. There were some people that I think were abusing the service. Because people didn't know what to do. And if I show up somebody's house there's an inch of water because they have a moat in their basement and it's come out of that, and they didn't wanna run over to Home Depot to buy a sump, then I'm sorry, we're not giving you ours anymore. Because what happens is we'll run, or they'll run it, they don't maintain it. And it burns itself out. So we're kinda done with that loner thing because it's not, it's not working.
Fair enough.
So this is for one four 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 to Industrial Safety Products. This is for salvage equipment, to replace the waterback which failed, and also get more salvage covers, which we also use in a fire situation to cover up things. If we had a fire in the second floor, we'd go FireTech first floor. We need some more for the new engine, we didn't have it.
Okay. So I'll move purchase order one four 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 in an amount of one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighteen cents to Industrial Safety Products for waterback and covers.
It's just amazing how much they give to these pieces of equipment. I saw anywhere from that number up to the little twos. And we shopped around, because it's not that complicated, but these are the...
Okay, purchase order fourteen forty-four is on moved and seconded to Industrial Safety Products in the amount of one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighteen cents. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, all right.
And again, those two large purchases are on the equipment line. That's, that totaled up to twenty-something, twenty-eight hundred dollars, and it's still four thousand there. So we're not even close to exhausting that line yet, so everything is well within our operational funding for right now. Last but not least, this one is good old radio equipment. Keep chasing that, we need a puppy all around. Portal radio batteries. We've started to have some that are about six years old, they're starting to fail. So for the radios we've had, we've gone through this, down this road before, you understand all the hurdles we're trying to get over. It's even getting harder to find replacement batteries for them. So our radio equipment line still has eleven hundred dollars in it. We found a vendor, he's in Indiana, who has the radios that we, the batteries that we need. So we purchased a dozen, just because it's getting harder and harder to find them. We've had four of them fail in the last month. They just reach a service life, you know, they've only got so many charges in it, it's not... So purchase order fourteen forty-seven to RTW Radio Two Way for twelve portable radio batteries, which are delivered tomorrow.
All right, I move purchase order one four four seven for RTW Radio Two Way for twelve seven-point-five-volt portable radio batteries for a price of eight hundred and forty dollars.
Right around here, I don't have the total invoice, but that'll cover all the costs.
For radio repair.
Purchase order fourteen forty-seven, we're moving second, any questions? So it's gonna be twelve that you can keep holding on a while longer.
We will.
Okay. Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Presenting this year, who wants, you can hand this stuff to Caroline if somebody puts it in the red...
The only thing we have on here, Mark, we was prior upon with this left on as a placeholder.
An ongoing thing, I kinda understand that, yeah.
And we can take it off if you want, but...
Uh, no, because I'm actually still trying to, I actually had a cursory conversation with Brian Pelman. And he's gonna try, he didn't have a number off the top of his head when he had invested in his dry hydrant down there. So he's gonna try to give you some background on that. So we'll keep that there in the forefront so that I can come in with a number and we can look forward to that down the road.
Anything for George?
And I know we're getting to the end, we talked about, you know, the next two Monday nights. I only anticipate maybe a couple of expenditures. One, as I explained when I sat down, was the gear. And then we're looking to get some foam for the engine. Because the new engine has an onboard foam system, it's a thirty-gallon tank. We only had ten gallons when we put it on there. And we'll try to bring that up, so grab that. Those are the only real two things I think I have left comment. I know there'll be, there'll be money left in the FD account when we're done at the end of the year.
So our regularly scheduled meetings are the tenth and the seventeenth. If there's an emergency, I mean, it could come out on the twenty-seventh, which is a Thursday after Russell votes. But I wasn't gonna have us come in at all Christmas week. So, then we could talk about the next, then perhaps, maybe coming out on the second of January, so Wednesday night instead, because...
Wednesday nights, it's Friday, but maybe every Wednesday night.
Then I guess we won't be doing that then, so...
Thursdays, but Wednesdays.
Okay, so then maybe...
I don't know if it's that night, but it seems like all Wednesdays.
Yeah, okay, I didn't think about that, sorry. So, but it's not, we'll let you know when the department, when we're gonna come back. But I would plan on having everything into Caroline for the Monday evening so we can approve it if we need anything. And of course, if emergencies happen, we'll get you...
Yeah, those are the only two things I'm looking at today. We had done that kind of a package deal with some of the crew officers at the station, the guy replaced the door that day. That was on the baseball field side. And Kevin wasn't here today because he already feel the difference without the draft coming in under the door. Because it got a nice sweep and it sealed it all up, so, you know, all that will kind of come to us. He's got one more small project due, and that one will be all done. Guys coming in to finish floors in about a week, that room will be finished, so those projects will all be put to bed, so... Always moving forward.
Did you get my email?
I did. I read it.
And? And comment?
It's...
Not right now?
Yes, and no, I mean, I understand exactly the twenty percent rule, but...
I sent it to you guys. It's the email, the shell small, I'm sorry, should've sent out more detail. I sent it to you guys, I sent it to the slide board.
It's also something we have to deal with necessarily. I talked to Caroline about it.
No, I just wanted to make sure you got it.
Keep it in mind that we don't wanna go over...
Oh, I read it, I was well aware of where we were headed. That's why I made my stand the other night, was the fact that, I mean, it depends on how people wanna interpret that and where the community itself wants to go.
I agree.
It's a stipend, it's not wages. And they wanna be considered volunteers, so...
Well, is that volunteer thing, whether you consider it to volunteer, because you have to meet these sort of stipulations. Or you jump out of the volunteer thing and go on to the like on-call kind of thing. And I think that's more where we are.
I think that's where you are now volunteering isn't where you are now. But that's where you haven't been for a while, you're more on the on-call.
That's kinda how all of them are. That's why that program and that report was generated, was because of all the issues. And it took them five years to decide how they were gonna handle that stuff. And there's still a lot of open areas in how you wanna interpret it.
Well, I guess that's where Shell does for a living and Concord. And we had talked about it at, when you presented your budgets, and I'll send you this, I wanted to make sure that you got it.
She sent me something like that, I don't know, one or two budget sessions ago.
Probably the same, I'm pretty close to the same thing.
Pretty close to the same thing.
I know, just something that once we get through this, we can, we have a conversation about, but just wanted to make sure you had it.
We'll see where we all wanna go and what road we're gonna go down.
Okay.
I know where I'm staring, and we'll just see where we go.
Okay.
All right. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Answer the police here. So we're gonna table their nuisance ordinance housing standards. Did you have any information on the police station town hall warrant article?
Uh, I got an email from Mr. Chief Duchamp saying that we will have numbers tomorrow.
So we'll table it for another week?
I do have a police, I think this is a police, yeah. Yeah, it says please, right? It's like please, you want me to do it now?
You can do it while being, that's fine.
But it's not a please, or you can do it while...
Yeah, I would just do it all as a package.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, so we have town administration budget. We need to take up a couple of things tonight. First thing we have is the error in the police full-time salary line. I believe we should probably revisit, send an amended version back to the budget committee.
Right. There was a nine thousand five hundred and forty-six dollar error on the police full-time salary line. And we need to make sure it goes back in there.
All right, so that would be, proposed budget was, what was it?
It was police full-time salary line, well, it's a total.
All right, so why don't, okay. So we need a motion to add in nine thousand, I guess it...
Five forty-six.
Okay.
All right, I'll make that motion to add...
Increase the salary line, yeah.
Increase the salary line for full-time salaries for the police department by nine thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars.
Okay, and I'll second that.
Okay, so, that will now bring the line to town, county, and farm, here somewhere. So the proposed appropriation was, was two hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty-four, so we're going to increase it by nine five four six. The new grand total would be two hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty.
What version are you looking at? Obviously, it's a different version than I have.
All right, well, maybe I am, hold on a minute. Maybe I pulled up the wrong one, yeah?
I have, but the colored one, I'm not even sure for some reason.
What's the date on?
Well, the date's clearly, well, one thirty-one eighteen.
I think this shows is the iron, the error of the wrong, uh, thank you, Miles.
Sure.
I'll back that up again before I come in. All right, so the full, so on the one that I have here, ten twenty-nine eighteen, is this the colored one?
Yeah.
Right, so what I have for full-time salaries is two forty-eight, one eighty-four. Two forty-eight, one eighty-four, right? Is that what you have?
That's what it has on this, on the, on the proposed appropriation, right?
There was a negative here, that's where we got caught, that there was a negative there, because we didn't take anything away.
All right.
So it was narrow.
So it should be an increase of nine five four six. So it should be two hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty. So if we moved and seconded to increase the police line, that full-time salary line by nine thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars for a grand total of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty in that line. Any other discussion?
Do we have to adjust the retirement? All that will be, that will be adjusted.
I think that that contains all of the, all of the areas. She had another thing, but I don't think she printed it out.
We'll confirm that, yeah. So then that should be, all right. So, have, okay, so we'll move to increase that line and increase any associated lines that may need to move with it, um, retirement or taxes, right?
Right.
If that hasn't already been done. All right, so all those in favor of making those changes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right, so Mr. Caroline knows about that, so she can make that change so the budget committee can have an updated version for it Wednesday evening. I think it's true that, too many irons in a bar, so, that one. Glad that we have our part-time workkeeper in place now so we can hopefully avoid those types of errors in the future. All right, so it is now two five seven. Next, we have a CIP we need to...
Can we go back to just, well, going back up to the regular budget first? Did we ever approve the chairs that Richard was asking for to replace these maroon ones? I don't think we did. You think you did? I don't think we did either. He wanted it to, I'm recommending a budget of a thousand dollars for thirty new chairs. Look like this.
Oh, yeah, those would be better.
Well, they would, they would be cleaner.
They'd be cleaner, they're probably last one, I think. The ones, pick one up for the night and get the top off of it, so, but anyways, all right.
I didn't know if we, if we had a challenge about.
I'm looking at it. So I would think it would come under Supplies for Town Hall, I guess, and we have the mats, but we don't have...
I think that was our very first budget workshop.
Did we not take it up?
I think we got put in a folder behind things and we didn't remember to do it.
I'm guessing that, if you wanna do it. You would like to do it?
I think it has to be done, it's not that I personally wanna do it, but they're pretty bad.
Pretty gross.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think, a thousand dollars, it's worth getting some...
And getting rid of these ones that have upholstery on it because they just, I mean, it's difficult to clean them.
All right, so I would suggest what we're gonna do is we should go under Town Hall Supplies. So that was a thirteen-hundred-dollar appropriation, should be a twenty-three-hundred-dollar appropriation, that's what you wanna do.
I'll make the motion that we increase it by a thousand dollars to purchase thirty chairs proposed by the custodian.
I'll second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, so. It will be. Add that on to it as well. Chair. Okay, there wasn't any other items that needed to be made, so we can.
Not that I'm aware of.
Change, send it over, back over to the budget committee, this is the updated version of the CIP?
No, this is just what I'm going to send the CIP, but I want, uh, send the budget committee the CIP, I'm not sending the whole project.
Oh, you have more to send.
Proposed for two thousand nineteen.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure that what I'm, what I know is correct. Looking at it, we, we propose to put a hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred.
Yeah.
To CIP's account.
Yeah.
Okay, and we're proposing in two thousand and nineteen to replace the town hall boiler, fire department radios, police cruiser. Aren't we doing the highway truck? Highway truck and the message board with a total of three hundred and three thousand eight hundred, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, and so how much is being removed from CIP's budget?
From, from the existing, uh.
From the, the, so is it the two hundred and twenty or the two hundred and thirty-one? That's where I'm confused.
Two hundred and thirty-one nine, I think, right? I don't know what that is, though. And then it's the, the net that we would be putting, um, we would be doing from direct taxation would be seventy-one nine, right?
Seventy-one is direct taxation. Okay, so.
Two hundred and thirty-one nine comes out of the CIP.
And two hundred and thirty-one nine comes out of the. Out of.
Right, isn't that what?
I, I just want to make sure, I don't know what this is.
So it adds.
So if you, if you're spending this. So this and this have to equal that, right?
Yeah. Three oh three eight, you got it.
Okay, so how does CIP is two thirty-one nine hundred and taxation is seventy-one nine hundred based on what we're purchasing, which is three hundred and three eight hundred.
Correct, and the amount we're putting into the CIP.
IP is one seventy-nine four hundred, okay, very good, I'll send that out tonight.
Okey. Um, well, we can approve it, of course. Let's have a vote, we have a voter on, no, we have a voter on yet.
Okay, then let's vote on it.
So Denise is moving that, that the CI, approve the CIP budget with a hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred going in for two thousand and nineteen. With three hundred and three thousand eight hundred dollars worth of expenses, expenditures rather. Two hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred of that, of that total coming from the CIP. With a net of seventy-one thousand nine hundred needed to be raised by taxation.
I'll second that.
Move, is that, and all those with favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, we'll send it off to. Send it off to the budget committee.
And talking about CIP and stuff, um, do either one of you have time that you can work on the spreadsheet for the, do you?
Sure.
I'm really having a hard time with it.
Okay.
Would you like me to send it to you?
Yeah.
And then it's what it is, is calculating whatever's on there and calculating what it would be, and then what is the, what, what was the amount that we didn't want to exceed in putting in every year? Because didn't we, because we kind of want to manipulate it, so it's not so much.
We'd like to keep it even, so I don't think there was an actual. There was an actual number we're trying to.
I thought we were trying to keep in that ballpark, between that and probably two hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Over to.
Okay, so.
Possibly.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know.
Thank you. Well, actually, you, you can access CIP online, right?
I don't know if I, I think some of that access is restricted, but I'll check with Caroline.
Oh, okay, I can make sure that she can be able to access it, and anybody should be in the select board be able to access that, I would imagine.
I think she did limit who could edit.
Yes.
Oh, maybe I won't, but I, I'll send her a mail, and you can contact her once and see. Okay, thank you, I appreciate the help.
So now we have the reserve funds. Yay, I'm too excited, I know. It's the most exciting part of the budget. Said firmly with tongue in cheek. So the capital improvement fund, reserve fund, we've just approved a hundred and seventy-nine four going in, right?
Mm-hmm.
Reserve funds. CIP, one seventy-nine four, right now I just said. All right, the next one we have is the covert reserve fund.
The what, covert?
Covert, yeah. So. We had, um, proposed rebuilding this fund to deal with these Sligo, uh, folk road culverts and any others that come up. We had originally thought we would put ten thousand in. If we want to continue with, um, down that road.
Do we know what the balance of that fund is?
We don't yet, so we don't have to have the, um. What, um, what are you all taking up on them tonight, CIP and what else?
Rick, CIP.
Cemetery.
Cemetery.
So we're not, the, um, quote-unquote town.
No, you have.
Part of the budget is toward the end, right?
Yeah, you had the last one in December.
Perfect, I like the last, all right. All right, so I would prefer actually to find out how much is in it before we decide what to pass, so. And then the, um, what we have, we have the conservation land trust fund, which is typically moving over, not either of the taxation. It's if, uh, things are taken out of, uh. Let's see, uh, things are taken out of, um, current use, these are moved over from the land use change tax. Land use change tax.
You jumped over the town revaluation fund.
I did, indeed.
Says we'll start rebuilding two thousand and nineteen. Two thousand and nineteen, because we spent it this year.
Right, correct.
Right, so.
So we need to see how much we put in prior years.
And he went up, and money went up.
Revaluation funds, we were putting in. Twenty seventeen, we put in seventeen six two five. You know what, I want to hold up an eye, so, but we can do the, um. Cover repair, CIP.
Well, they have, they have their contract right here, the four-year contract is ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty, and their one-year contract is five thousand seven twenty.
I think that's for the reevaluation.
Contract assessing.
Yeah. But that's not, um. But that's not to do that one.
Multi-ussing or, you can expire into someone.
I just looked at the number, what, I thought it was seventeen, what now?
I'm sorry?
Seventeen six twenty-five. And what number did you just send, ninety-seven?
Ninety-seven eight eighty for four-year contract. They did go up.
So to do this, the reevaluation was approximately eighty-eight thousand dollars. If you, if you take the seventeen six twenty-five times five. That's what it would've been, so.
But was that an equal, we don't know if that was, they put the same amount of, yeah, or the ending balance.
I need to go back and look at that.
Yeah.
I'll go see there. Give me a piece of paper. Reserve funds. No, it's just going to tell me the one. Just going to tell me the one here, doesn't have a history for those, but it does have. Somewhere in there, has the. Reserve fund during here.
Maybe we should.
Fund, five sixty. It's from the Hamas. Cold, reserve fund. Property revaluation trust. Well, the beginning year balance zero, beginning year balance income, um, ten dollars and nine cents, this doesn't seem to be what I'm looking for, though. That's clearly.
Maybe we should talk, Caroline, this is a margin of this, so we can review it before we go to the next meeting.
Take it up at the next meeting, in fact. All righty, get back to our regular scheduled program. So our reserve funds are under table. All right, budget committee secretary posting, any, any of those boards of volunteers that were asked to, to locate when we want to do something else in town, step forward here? No? Didn't think so. I did notice that Mr. Ordway had posted on one of those Facebook feeders, asking people to do it, I don't know, I don't know which one, but popped up in my feed, so thank you for that, for doing that. Anyone, anyone that wants to be the budget committee secretary, hopefully will step forward. It shouldn't be a member of the committee, so it should be a separate person, they are elected to serve as members, not take nicks, so. All right, we'll keep looking, then. I know Kate and Andrea were going to, um, reach out to people as they came in to see if they might be interested, so we thank them for that. Uh, the Oak Street MOU, we looked, we didn't see it in the folder, right?
I don't have it.
Hmm, well. We're going to table it then and find out, um.
What was, what was the MOU that I asked you about?
The old one.
That's the, that's the old one, that's August, so we don't have a new one, oh, we, oh, because it was going to go to their legal counsel, right, and then they were going to do it, this is August.
But is there a place for us to start off on it, that we were okay with that one, maybe that's why.
This has been in there forever, there was just a whole pile of stuff that just needs to be filed.
All right, yeah, this is the, the twenty eighteen one, signed by Suzanne, myself and Jordan. Okey, so, well.
So it just hadn't come back in, I'm assuming.
Correct, all right, but we were ready to go with it, so I'll ask again, uh. Okay, the holiday schedule.
So did we do conservation, or we're not going to do?
We're gonna, I just tabled the, all of the rest of the reserve funds until next week, when we get a better handle on what's in the other ones.
I have more POs, I don't have.
Oh, yeah, we just haven't got it yet, I haven't got that folder yet. So the holiday schedule, as I mentioned, we have next week and then the seventeenth. Monday to twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve is, uh, would be a regularly scheduled, um, meeting and the thirty-first, New Year's Eve also. I, I am not available on the twenty-fourth. Spending time with my family, I imagine you probably don't as well. So would suggest that we not meet that week, and that the following week, we might want to meet, it's the new year, on the third, I guess, because. Wednesday's our budget committee night, right?
Yes.
You don't get to escape, you have to go, sorry.
Yes.
Miles, is the third word for you?
Yep.
Denise, you think it might work for you? Okay, I'm going to put it in here, I'll, well, that, what time would we like to meet, you want to meet earlier, like at six, or do we want to keep it at six-thirty? Much easier for people.
Doesn't matter, you know what's fine.
Let's do, uh, let's do six o'clock, so I may work for you, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay, well, we'll have to find that.
Unless you go early, Thursday. I, I need to be at the library, yeah.
We'll have to ask the budget committee secretary if they'll fill. All righty then, so I will figure it out. We're going to have to, and it doesn't, it might not be a full, uh, select work, it might be, it might be short, so, but I doubt it. And as, as I told the other, um, the folks that came in this evening, that they would need to have their, all their POs in by the seventeenth. And. Put it in my calendar now, so I don't miss the meeting, I just called. All right, so that's it for the holiday schedule, policy review.
That was me.
Okay.
One of the things that we're having a difficult time is getting policies made, and more, we delay on it, then I think the more difficult it's going to be for us. And so I have a suggestion that if the three, if the two of you are willing to, if we all took a policy, one policy, each of us took one, and then worked on it. And had updates weekly, we could get like three policies done at the same time, and, you know, it would get us to start. And then when one was done, then we would go on to getting another one. I just think that we have to have a plan, because it kind of just is falling through the cracks, in my opinion, so, we think.
Gets away from us.
Yeah. It does get away from us.
How many policies in the year?
There, we don't have policies.
There's a lot of things we don't have policies on, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of things, I mean, we have the major ones, and we, we have the sexual harassment one, and we have. Um, and she named a couple of them, I forget what it was, but the, the ones that she said the municipal associations and, or someone said that we needed, these are the ones that really need, oh, the insurance company said that we needed those, so. I think, I think, I think it's going to be a lot, and so just taking on policies in general is going to be overcasting, but if we each took something, one, just one at a time.
Yeah, no, not doing it, it's not going to move it forward, for sure.
And, and so I just thought, it might be a little easier if we, you know, can look up and see if we can find some examples and make recommendations, and.
So this is what I would suggest, I think it's a good idea, and I think we should go forward with it. I think we should find a, I don't like this, but maybe, a Saturday morning, where we have a strategic planning session. At the first of the year, we can go, once, I'd like to get through the end of the budget, which is going to be coming to an end from our perspective soon. The budget committee's hands, well, it already is, but, um, fully in their hands. To go through these sort of things, to say, okay, so now that it's the new year, and these are what we would like to see as priorities, not, 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 not the, the financial piece, and that's what we've been baking into the budget, so. But what do we see as, we want to. But what do we see as, we wanna revise or enact a policy on X, Y, and Z? We should, I think, have a brainstorming session and look at where we're deficient. I don't think we can decide right now. We can do it in a Monday night, if that's what we wanna do, but we need to parlor time separate, get to talk about it.
Yeah, we need, we need a kickoff meeting, right? What are we talking about for policies, what's, what are the resources we use to go in front of?
Right.
I think Parlo Caroline can help us find out what is the most important ones at the beginning.
Sure.
And then, like I say, you just each take one, and maybe she can give us some suggestions or some websites of where to go and look. I'm tasked right now to do the Recreation Department's, Rec Director and Assistant Rec Directors already, I'm working on trying to get through that. It isn't easy, I guess it isn't, but you know, but we have to, we have to start somewhere. And if we, doing one instead of trying to do five at the same time, I think would be easier if we are just.
Okay, I'm with it, I'm with it.
Concentrate on it, yeah.
That's a good idea. So, we wanna look at when we wanna have that, that session? Now, or we want to wait till we get into the new year?
Now, are you, when you say a strategic planning, are you saying just with a slide board?
Yeah.
Okay, because I have a bigger picture about strategic planning, that we should be starting pretty soon too.
Well, I think it should be part of it.
Right, but I think that, you know, this is gonna take a little while. We used to do strategic planning here, in my younger days, because I was on it. And, and you had multiple people from throughout the town and boards, and it really was, but I don't know why we ever stopped. It is that the people just got, wasn't interested anymore, but I really think that we should reactivate that.
It's on committee?
It's a strategic planning committee, but it, I mean, it has school, it has fire, it has police, it has residents, it had, and it was a facilitator who came and did it. And, and maybe that's where it was, because it cost to have a facilitator, but it was a really good process. And, and it got people on task, and what was important, and where we needed to start first, and then going, you know, doing projects, so. So that's something that we should do down there, I'm not saying.
In the absence of that, we should be doing something.
Absolutely, but.
It's something we want, so the nice thing about not having this part of a regularly scheduled meeting, you can devote a little more time and not have, I wanna call it. They are distractions, I mean, they're important work that we're doing, other things, but.
But some focus.
Yeah, exactly, so that's why I say, a Saturday, my morning for a couple of hours, might be a good, a good way to.
I can't, I can't think of a better way.
I know.
I was thinking maybe another night during the week versus a Saturday morning, but.
That's fine.
I don't know what you guys' schedule looks like, but weekends are.
Busy all the time, so.
I'll go with the direction.
We don't have to decide tonight, we can keep it on the, on the, on the agenda, or change it to, I'm gonna have her, I changed the agenda, I'm gonna change the agenda for next week's strategic planning session.
Dash policy.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna keep it under that, yeah. I'm gonna have this be the new header, and this be something under, under that.
Okay.
And other things can come up under as well, so. Okay, so let's be thinking about what we wanna do, and we can pick a date next week, then, that's fine. We have a, the Joint Laws Committee is asking us to initiate, or enact rather, a tobacco-free policy.
First policy that we don't have to do ourselves.
Well, I've read it, I looked at it today, earlier today, and I think it needs to be revised, but. Recall, well, you might, you read it a little ago, because you weren't here, but there was a time when we had a number of complaints that would come in to us, from folks. Complaining about specifically at the transfer station, employees smoking there, residents didn't care for it. We have an opportunity where at the moment, we don't have any employees that smoke on the job apparently, from what I'm told by Joint Laws. I don't know, and this might be the time to enact the policy if we're going to do it. So it wouldn't be, I've read through this a couple of times, it needs, it needs to be revised. I did a cursory look at other towns in the state, a number of them have policies like this, they're not quite like this, though, so.
Do you think this is too strong?
No, it's, some of, some of the language is dated. Some of the language isn't used anymore, and some of it is evolving. So, no use of any tobacco product, including cigarettes, smoking tobacco, chewing tobacco, electronic cigarettes. And vapes are not permitted on grounds or within the facilities mentioned. I don't disagree with any of that, but there's no such thing as a vapes. I mean, this is, this is the world, I deal with this every single day, this is the stuff I do. I help communities enact policies like this, and it wasn't my idea to do it, it was Joint Laws, so. But I can come up with better, minor than that, so.
I think if you'd have, I don't know what, I don't know what you call that device.
Well, you could just say electronic devices, because when you, so the misnomer is that they're just vaping as harmless water vapor that gets shot off. It's actually a mixture of chemicals that, the main, main chemical is poly, non, I don't know how to pronounce it. It's, it's the same thing that's in antifreeze. It emits an aerosol, actually, and there's been tests that show that there's carcinogens in the aerosol as well. They're not harmless, it's just a new, it's, it's the, the tobacco industry is very sly and very clever. They've been producing and selling people a product that's been known, proved to kill them for sixty years. We've known about it, the Surgeon General put out a report in nineteen sixty-four all about it, yet they're still saying that they evolved, they're smart. This is the new evolution, they're getting a whole new generation addicted to nicotine, and they're doing it through these devices. They're not combustible anymore, they're through these devices, but they still emit a carcinogen. So, we should be considering them, but because they're so smart, they've been saying this, I'm gonna get off my soapbox in a second. They, they're always one step ahead of the curve, so if you use, if you, if you're just a little more careful in just the electronic devices. Or something like that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna check and see if that's what we're still using. Then you don't get tied into, well, I'm not using a Juul, say, a name brand. That all the kids now are using, because they look like little things to stick in your computer. Yeah, they look like, the, the drawings that you.
Thumbmash. Thumb jerk.
They look just, they're a little smaller than that, though. And they attach, kids attach it to the hoodies or their sweatshirts, and they go into them, they do it, and they blow it off, and there's not a smell, so anyways. They're doing it in school, because we're normalizing smoking, which is just what everyone wants, right? We've all worked so hard to make sure people don't anymore, but anyways, not everyone, people still do it. So I'm for this, it's just, I don't know if this is the way, if this is the language we wanna use.
Yeah, I think, I.
And again, it was Joint Laws.
You work in this industry, and I think if there's more modern language, clearer language, then we should adopt.
I think, I asked where it came from, and they said they did a Google search. So I don't even know if this is from New Hampshire, it could be from Maine, it could be from Massachusetts, I don't know. I have no idea, but all I know is it was unanimous at Joint Laws, they wanted us to do this policy, so. Denise, I couldn't pay attention, I guess. I thought it might just have been one person, but it was all of them, I guess. Anywho, so do you want me to work on this one policy? And that will come up with a different language here for next week for us?
That's fine, I would keep it on there.
Some of it may still be the same, but. Okay, well, the other hiccup, though, I just wanna mention, I don't wanna belabor the point, but they mentioned the library. Clearly, there shouldn't be people smoking or using tobacco in general in the town library.
I think it's on the property side.
Right, that's what they want, so one of the definitions they have is property means facilities curb-to-curb, including offices, grounds, adjacent sidewalks. Parking lots, ramps, town-owned vehicles, and employees' vehicles parked on town-owned property.
But we don't own the library building.
Correct. Correct, so that's like, can you, can you do that? I mean, that's the cutter, it's private property, so. That's, plus, we don't control the library, every library in the state is controlled by Board of Trustees, they have authority. We wouldn't want to work in concert with them, so maybe we do this, and we send it to them, see if they would sign it as well, I don't know.
Yeah.
Think in a couple, we're not at that step stage yet, I don't think, but it's something to think about, too. Or we, we, or we have, I don't know, I'll take away some more, but. But there are some really good things about it, you know, any, any employee that, you know, wants, is, does use tobacco, that would like assistance. We'll get them, we'll point them in the direction of smoking cessation programs, and our health insurance policy has them, so. There's a state quit line, there's all these things, we can help them get services if they needed it, so, which I think is important. And any visitor violating the policy will be asked to discontinue in a tactful manner, which I, is that the best way to phrase it? I don't know, but, again, I don't know where they got it from, but it's a good first one, so I just wanted to mention the thing with the library, and I'll be quiet then. Okay, inventory penalty, we have a spreadsheet or some sort of form in one of the folders? Forms in the folder, but isn't there a, isn't there like a, oh, they're there. So if we come up with any more. So I just wanted to be honest, but if for some reason someone else emails us and says, oh, by the way, I ain't got mine either. There's a form that Andrea has created for us, but we just have to fill out, sign, and send to her, asking that you do the abatement, so. We have two of them?
We have two of them, I, I think this one we talked about last week, Dennis and Andrea, these are two properties that needs.
Yeah, we have purchased, they have that notified, I'm sorry.
We did approve it soon. Sign my phone up. We had to vote it last week, didn't we?
Yes, we did, we, last week or the week before, I know we voted on it, it just hadn't gotten notified that it was approved.
This is the only other one?
So.
Johnson, yeah, Paul and Janice Johnson. I'll see their address here. Also. Did not receive theirs.
So we haven't taken an action on this one yet, so Mr. and Mrs. Johnson reached out to us claiming that they didn't receive theirs either. And were questioning why they were being assessed a fifty-dollar penalty for something they claim they never received. What is people's pleasure at?
I'm gonna ask this question, I don't know if we have the answer, do we keep track of who asks us for exemptions year over year?
I think that's why we're doing this.
Okay.
We didn't have a system.
Okay.
We did not have a system, and so my question to the tax collector was, for all of these, are these, sort of frequent flyers? Are these the same people year after year? And the answer was, no, so.
Okay, that's.
Well, I didn't hear it from the tax collector, or from the, from Caroline Masterson. I don't wanna, I didn't talk to her.
I'm fine commenting that the one time.
Well, it doesn't matter, because we're not gonna have it next year, so.
Right, okay.
I just find it strange that we're having so many that didn't get, get them, so was it our fault, or was it their fault, or was it the postal service?
So there's two schools of thought, right? You can, and the way we've been falling down on it is saying, well, we just believe in them, because how do we prove that it's not? But really, the onus, the law says that you have to produce this form. We mailed them all to everybody, as far as we know, so we could just say no to everybody, but we haven't done that so far, so. Because the people that have come to us so far have said, well, we've done it every other year, what, you know? In fact, in the emails they've sent us, that they've done it every other year, we didn't get it this year, so we've believed them, so. I have no reason to believe that Mr. and Mrs. Johnson are also in the same category, I haven't heard. We have a very thorough tax collector that, and I'm laughing at this, that is very good about remembering these things, I think. If there were someone that year after year was trying to pull this, she would have told us, so.
Yeah, I just think that, you know.
It's weird.
The way we sent them out and all of those kind of things are questionable, and, because they're, they had stickers over closing them in, and just a sheet of paper, you know. And I think, I'm not running here, I'm thinking, maybe postal service, I mean, postal service tends to, lately has been horrible. Take how long it takes to get something, but also if you got stuck to something because of that way it was happening, and so.
The thing is, it's not processed here anymore, so like all the local mail used to be processed.
Yeah.
If it was in town, Kevin in his, no, they sent it to Manchester.
Manchester?
Yeah, so every single piece of mail, unless you ask them to hand-cancel it, and this, obviously they didn't ask. We hand-cancel a thousand of these forms, or a hundred of these forms. But, like if I go in and wanna mail something to a post office box, I just say it's for a post office box, and hand-cancel, so. If not, it goes to Manchester, that comes back, I mean, so, I think you're probably right, I don't think it's a breakdown here, I think it's a breakdown.
I think it is.
Sorting in Manchester, but, anyway, are we gonna approve the Johnson's request?
I make a motion that we accept the Johnson's request for reimbursement or a credit abatement to, for his amendment of form.
Oh, second, uh, any other discussion? All those, if they ever say hi.
Hi.
And there was one more.
I think this was it.
Okay.
I don't think I saw another one, I'll just double check while we're here. Lavens got theirs, and Vissons, yeah, Johnson. Yes, thank you. There was four, yeah, there were four of them. But they were up to date now, I think, so, I know that the Vissons or Vissons, I'm not always pronouncing it. Sent us an email asking why they hadn't heard from us, but that's why, we gotta enact it. We're gonna have a form, yeah, to sign. Alrighty, that's taken care of. Town administration, board member activities, so I have two things on here I'd like to hear about, if you don't mind telling us. How did the Lamprey, Lamprey budget meeting go?
Bizarre.
Hopefully it didn't last more than half an hour.
Um, it was not more than half an hour.
Okay, okay, but it was bizarre, I believe they are, yeah.
So the, the people running the meeting were, were late, so, I don't know who's, who, but anyways, we sat there. Many minutes.
We had quorum, we had to, oh, it was.
We had to call someone to come drive there to make a quorum, but we got quorum. And they, you're welcome, they did approve both the reserve budget and the operating budget. And I, I don't have those numbers, I thought I had them in my sack here, but I don't, and I.
They were, what, they were, that was emailed out, right?
Yep.
I don't have it written either, so. Were there any surprises?
There were no surprises, so.
Well, thank you.
Sure.
Antichemetic, we did a good thing. And the Budget Committee, Denise, how did the meeting go on Wednesday night? Did you both go?
I, I, I had it in my head it was Thursday night, I apologize.
No problem, it was okay, it wasn't great, but it was okay.
Were there, so there was a concern obviously raised about the, the police full-time line, would we resolve?
Yeah.
Were there any other questions or concerns that they had about those three pieces of the budget that we can resolve?
No. I think we're all set, it was only the police that I needed, that was my area to resolve.
Was it police fire and what was the third?
Police fire, and.
Library.
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 Okay, so that we don't, so. Alright, well, thank you for those updates, anything else happening?
Tomorrow night is Planning Board.
Oh, yes, anything big on the Planning Board's agenda?
I haven't seen the agenda yet, so, there's a continuation of the meeting for Oldenburg Lane, if that's what it's called.
Yeah, they wanna change their.
Change them to single-family homes.
All of them?
All of them, they're dropping, it'll be one less residence, so from three duplexes. To five homes, yeah, so it would have been six.
Six buildings.
Six buildings.
Oh, so it's gonna be five buildings?
Six units.
Six units, but three buildings.
Three buildings.
There were duplexes, but now they're five.
So it's gonna have enough room to?
Yep.
Okay. I'm on, I'm on, they're all up to you guys.
It's a, it's a carefully engineered plan, and it, it looks like they're squeezing things in, but, you know.
How long did they make that ladder of them?
There was a, at the last, I don't think I gave you guys an update of the last, from the last Planning Board meeting, because it was a, not a huge crowd, but the. A butters showed up to express concerns and more, the, the road and visibility. Caroline did a great job explaining that they already have an approved plan, but they could go and act upon, they don't, they're coming back and asking for revision to that plan, so.
Alright, I know the, the really big, as I recall, the really big objection was they didn't want, folks didn't want duplexes down there. Apparently they resolved that piece of, I mean, people didn't want development at all down there, but that's lawful to do it, so. That's why it is.
So they're also, they're going to be.
Water, water. Pardon?
The houses are going to be in an association.
A neighborhood association?
But, it's, I guess.
What they have down on River Road, they're.
Yeah, so all of the common land ends up in a. Yeah, so all of the common land ends up in an association.
Okay.
Which actually is, I think, beneficial, the rain gardens that.
Requiring the quarter, yeah.
Yeah, will get maintained through the association.
In theory.
In theory.
The town reminds them of those jokes.
Um, I do think it's a good thing, it's just.
Yeah, interesting.
Yeah.
Well, it, so we, the Chemberg one I thought was two, they have a neighborhood association, I thought, I'm not sure, someone told me? Maybe not, but the, what, are they called Woodlands?
Woodlands, there, there's a, there's a homeowners association.
The Task Corps, another recreation thing. Anyway, all right, well, thank you, Alan, you did a lot with that. This was posted, alright, anything else? I've got a strap for refilling the question board Friday morning, I think, so we'll check. Thursday, sorry, Thursday evening, oh, thank goodness, it's an evening now more, I could be so happy, alright. So, yeah, I've got a strap for refilling the question this week.
On the budget.
You win.
On the win.
I win. Either way, more budgets, though, little permits or that folder, I was.
We have a permit for a switch disposal system.
Hey, he's been.
One sixty General Sullivan Day.
I'm gonna do what you want to do.
What?
Should I sign all that?
I'm very.
I'm gonna do it, yeah. Okay, there you go.
Oh, okay.
Good work today.
Also in the red folder.
Is it?
It.
Yeah, you have a red folder.
Okay, so I have a purchase order one-five-four-one, Quality Response Systems, three adult smart gag, gads? Did you, was that, or pads, pads.
Cartridges.
Cartridges for AED.
Oh, for the, the.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to talk to Bobby, I'll send it in writing. Uh, three of them for sixty-five dollars each, for a total of one ninety-five, twenty-dollar shipping, PO is for two hundred and fifteen dollars.
Seconded up. Okay, purchase order fifteen forty-one to Quality Response Systems, it's been moved and seconded, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright. The mic was on, so.
Purchase order one-five-five-seven for Kelly Anderson, four two first aid kits, three thirty-seven, forty-seven each, total seventy-four, ninety-four, and one case of sixty-nice packs for twenty dollars and four cents, with a total of ninety-four, ninety-eight, coming out of Winter Rec.
Seconded up, alright, so purchase order fifteen fifty-seven has been moved and seconded, this reimbursement of the things she bought.
I think she probably put it on her account and she's being reimbursed, but that's what she's getting. We've talked about this at our last meeting.
Alright, alright, for ninety-four, ninety-eight, all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, yeah. They come with a better way to, better system, but you're working on, you're working on that.
Yes.
It's gonna be one, one, you're working on, ah, yes.
On many things, our request for dispersment, Miles England, on December third, the requested amount dispersed is sixteen hundred for each select board stipend.
So what I was gonna say is, I had Caroline fill these out for us, payroll is, she wants all the payroll in for next week, I think she told me. So if we wanna get our dispersments in for the end of the year, for our stipend for the year, we need to get them in, so, alright. Miles, you can be paid for your service, thank you, huh?
I didn't know, this will be a check. Just, I'm gonna, and I heated it up.
You can pay your oil bill now, congratulations.
Request for dispersment, Michael Rolo, December third, amount of requestment, amount requested for dispersment is twelve hundred dollars, Joe Stichen.
I'm not, I guess I have to sign it, I guess I, I can't, I'm not going to.
Do we not have to go on this, does that design it?
The request for, they're budgeted dispersments, I mean, they're. I didn't remember to object, I guess, but.
Request for dispersment, Denise Knowles, eleven twenty-seven, select board stipend, three thousand dollars.
You haven't been taking yours quarter.
Haven't been taken mine.
You have got it, so, that's why I'm only getting twelve hundred dollars, if I take my other. And that will bring us all current to the end of our.
Correct.
End of our term, or end of our year, fiscal year, January one. New year begins January one and then our new salary year, new year coming up.
I don't know why I have those, do you know what, is, is this an acknowledgement that we paid it guy? Miles didn't sign it.
He wasn't here, he was outside.
Oh, that wasn't me.
He was fine.
Oh, it was just a receipt that we paid, because that, that means down there, okay, so just a file.
Yeah, yes. See, yeah, so.
Okay. File copy. It's, it's for the County, Stratford County Commissioners' Office for seven hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars, our portion of the county, Stratford County Commissioners. To the selectmen, please chief, fire chiefs. Do I have to read this whole long letter?
So it's, Robert Holes is coming, but the county dispatch assessment would.
Five percent, yeah, five percent.
Instead of giving the five percent back like they do every year, Bob and the other chief suggested just keep it at five percent and reinvest it in other, in things of dispatch.
Yeah.
So that you don't whack it at the end of the year for a special assessment or something.
Yeah, it was found that county, if you want to read it, Miles.
Just an advice.
That's what, that's what.
Going on projects, we knew that. And I just said, Miles, so for the dispersments, it can be done quarterly, so the auditor doesn't want us to get paid before.
You earn it.
Before we can earn it, I mean, it's. It's a year.
It's for that in a year, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so what do you, what is in your red folder?
This was the increment.
This is all the things that come from the front office.
I don't wanna get these dispersments misplaced, so.
Well, Caroline will.
Does she know what this is?
Yeah.
I'm gonna just leave it right there, alright, and that's all I know.
Do you need input?
Um, Celia Link, full of Washington Street, have we thought about possibly talking to Stratford Regional Planning Commission about a facilitator for strategic planning?
We have not.
But maybe they could have services that we offer, and if that does come with a fee, you might know we'll also be bothered with it.
So just, you know, there's, so there's two different things we're, we're thinking about, so, yeah, there's the strategic planning that the select board has done, we didn't do it last, but has done in the past several years, where we get together and we just have a workshop, brainstorming session about what we wanna tackle throughout the year, and there's a larger picture that Denise has brought up, that's separate, so. We haven't even decided if we wanna go down that route yet, but if we do, we'll definitely be reaching out to Regional Planning Commission. There's a couple of other groups that provide facilitators for a fee, so, but that would be one, thank you for the suggestion. We also have a train facilitator, and it done, did it in the past for us for. Camera board was about, remember, Judy Nelson came in and we were all sitting there, I can't remember what it was about now. It was important, it really was, I just, I just can't remember what it was at this late hour, sorry, but thank you, it's, it's a good suggestion.
Yeah, you just need someone who is, you know, can run the meeting and be able to just keep people on task. That's, really, that's all it is, and you probably wouldn't have to pay somebody to do it, for a small stipend, if you hire somebody who is in the.
Right, oh, yeah, it's a good suggestion.
And the Budget Committee opening, do they cover the meetings in January and February for SB two? Are they responsible for those?
They would take them in, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
There's still an opening if you'd like to position.
I would consider.
No.
SB, no, SB two, isn't that done by?
The clerk.
The clerk.
What were you talking about, the, the?
Are you talking?
Well, isn't there?
The public hearing.
But there's a budget.
There's budget.
You mean the deliberative?
Yes.
Deliberative session will be done by the clerk.
But the, yes.
I was in January and it would be done by.
The secretary, the recording secretary.
Yeah.
So that'd be one day and then all the rest of them are.
With the changeover in the way, do tell me.
Yep.
I want clear vision, what.
So let's just say for sake of argument that you wanted to take this position, let's say you have to, let's just say you wanted to, right? So you wouldn't, you would be busy at the public hearing, but you would be free to make comments at the deliberative session, because you would be sitting with the rest of us, and get the town moderator would be running it. Anything else? Alright, so then by consensus, we will adjourn at eight thirty-six, about earlier than the last to be extended.
Very good.
And budget season will be over soon enough, and we will be out of here by eight o'clock.
We've only had one meeting, it's not even close to being over.
I mean, from our piece of.
Oh, for, oh, oh, okay, I was talking about it in general.
Oh.
No, no, no.
We're gonna need to look at the deadlines again to make sure we're all. This can go a little bit.
Thank you.
I prefer to close them back too.
Okay.
Ah, it's not really bad, but the person buying.